This is Friday, March 22nd. Continuation of the Tupperboro Board Selectmen's Meet Work Session following a non-public. And Jim and Frank, come on down. Plenty of room at the table. Thank you for coming out this morning, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Josh.
So, you know, we're on the cusp of the paving season and what we want to do today is sort of solidify where we're going with the repaving work for this year.
Would you like to introduce him? I mean, I know you did your introducing before the camera, but I don't think people know who he is.
Okay, so we have Frank Carroll of FR Carroll Paving here with us this morning.
Earl State Paving.
Now Allstate, yeah. Alright, so we have talked about a number of different paving possibilities from here. We've got, I think, Jim, did you share this with him, which was...
I think I might be missing that sheet at the moment. I think if I put it in my...
Alright.
This was all together and I don't see it.
Yeah, we can make copies of it for sure.
I'm sorry, I was taking it anyway.
Just one copy for everybody if you would. So I guess my thought is that we start from that as a starting point and then figure out exactly where we're gonna end up. It may be the same as that, it may be different than that, but...
Our goal is to try to comply or maintain the paving schedule that came about from a paving survey that Wexford Plan Commission did for us. And they put together a 10-year projection of what you should do and propose what we should do. They're all of our roads up to, I think, 80%, I think that was their goal. And they kind of, they broke everything up into quarter-mile segments, which is a little unruly, but I think we can combine a lot of them, or some of them, to make it work. So we've got two or three, maximum of two or three projects in the town for the year.
That shows the segments right there. So one of the things that we agreed we were gonna do this year is put down a base coat on Sawyer Road.
Oh, okay.
Sawyer Road.
I'm thinking top coating, Brown, sorry.
Right. So, and town meeting affirmed that we were gonna, there's a short section of Sawyer Road, you're familiar with it, right? No, we didn't pave when Ospey did and we agreed this year that we're gonna pave that. So that will be prep and base coat on Sawyer Road, right?
Correct.
So that's one.
I have some questions when we're done with Sawyer.
Yep, the next piece that I think we want to include is the top coat on the section of Brown Road that paved last fall. We don't want to let that thing go until it starts to deteriorate because it doesn't have full depth, so... And then we work on from there, I guess I would say. You wanted to address something on Sawyer Road?
Yes. Just to explain to you, about seven, five, seven years ago, the floor of a town meeting listened to one individual. "We're not paving Sawyer Road," even though possibly could really rebuild it for us and that. What the selectmen did at this town meeting is they, "We want to revisit that issue, but to be open about it." You know, we want to park. So it was prep the road for $15,000. You're familiar with that, that section?
Yes, I am.
How wide pavement is it? It looks more than 22-foot wide roadway there.
I haven't been out to measure it.
What's the rest of the road paved, that you did the paving on the rest of it, correct?
I believe it was, no, it was all of 20, not more.
It would be 20, I'm gonna budget for 22, right?
Yep.
Okay. Do you pre-grade the road and cut the, what, 90 degrees in so, you know, there's no bump?
You can try your best not to get a bump.
Yeah, right, yes. The prep also include a 50-foot for Phineas Graves Road?
The abrins.
The abrins.
I'm not sure that we talked about that, that we did. Okay. Because we actually didn't go out there on site. We gave him, I talked to him on the phone.
Right.
There was a lot of different time zones between the first conversation and the final conversation.
Well, the transition from paved to dirt at the intersection of Phineas Graves. Is it better to have it around the corner or right at the intersection?
Well, I guess I'd like to say that it would be a lot less traffic coming on and off if you had it out further on Sawyer, excuse me, Phineas, as opposed to where we're gonna ride the edge trying to plow on and off. I'd rather see that paved, I think.
And how far back from the intersection?
Well, we've been trying to keep it 50 feet.
Okay.
This also helps out when people take off to get onto the roads. They don't, like if a car comes and it's spinning on the gravel trying to get onto the paved road. It prevents that.
So that pavement, we then want to include at least 50 feet up on the Phineas Graves.
But the prep is under the warrant article, Sawyer Road prep, right?
Under that warrant, yeah.
And you're grading, does the grading in what...
That we can, yeah.
And do you have an estimate on how much gravel's gonna be brought in?
I don't have the number of yards off the top of my head, but yeah, we're looking at, it's a fairly large amount. I want to say it was, with the trucking, I want to say it was probably about $8,500 worth.
Well, that was half of your figure.
Correct.
Excuse me. And when you're done paving, you do the shoulders, correct?
Yep.
And you tamp them down.
Yep.
The job that you've done on Dergan Road, the natives up there love you. At the mailboxes and on the hill, it's not eroding, so... Comes out of the four corners down over the hill.
Coming from over 171 down into Ospey where you start.
Oh, yeah.
At the Ospey line.
Yeah.
I've asked the phone about paving and then putting the top coat on in the same year. And his recommendation and other recommendations were you wait a year in case of something happening. On this one here, I spoke to a couple of people in my neighboring town and they say, "You know, Lloyd, that base is, the foundation is so good and so firm, there's nothing going to happen. You really want to get this project done to accommodate you, so you're not having to bring your equipment back in the next year." And I'd like to ask the selectmen if it's okay with you guys to consider getting that project quickly.
I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
Now, we did base coat and top coat on that section of Dergan Road this past year and we ran over what we had in the warrant article and had to take money from someplace else to get the other project done because we did a double pave on that section of Dergan. And if it's better to let it sit a year, then I think we let it sit a year. That to do both coats in the same year, and that's what I seem to hear is the optimal way to do it, to do one one year and then the next, next year. I think that's what we ought to do.
Did you get a chance to run over the road after the first base coat when they did Sawyer for Ospey?
Yes.
I noticed it was, it got bumpy. It had a lot of people shifting. And then once you put the top coat on, it's held up very well. So I feel it's the same road, the same thing will probably happen again. I'd rather wait the year, I think.
Okay, yeah. Well, I mean, I'm not sure what the benefit to doing them both in the same year is.
To have the equipment there once.
Well, we're gonna have the equipment in town next year as well, right? I mean, yeah, there's some mobilization charge to get it to the site a second time, but, I mean, I've heard from you before and again right now, that waiting a year for the top coat is a better way to go.
What's your opinion on that? What's your opinion, Frank?
It happens in different ways all the time for different reasons. If the subbase is good, we've done it many times and it's fine. But if you have questions on your subbase and all, waiting the year, those bad things will show up. It gives you a chance to maybe fix a smaller section that you didn't see coming that would cause the road to heave or do different things. So, yeah, lots of times we do it the second year for that reason and/or you're doing a section of road that's long, a mile and a half long. You can only afford to find it one half of it and then the next year find it the other and then top it. You need to put the top on within two to three years. I don't like to say more than three because people forget about it.
The base will start to break down and then you've lost the...
You've lost your value in the road and what you were trying to accomplish.
Well, I think in general, you've done a good job, because I think back over a number of years of the second year getting that top coat on after the base coat, right?
Yep, I do always talk with Frank here, I value his opinion greatly, so we work with Frank on that and what he thinks and how to get the best bang out of our dollar.
So what's Brown Road gonna top cost us for top coat?
You didn't have anything that would do this.
I think I have it.
I think I have it at my desk.
That was like 3,000 feet long, I believe, yeah.
This is the base coat one, but I think we have it at 7,900 feet, is that sound?
No, that's way, yeah. Yeah, that was, we only did half of Brown Road, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so this was, this was if you did the whole road with binder.
Okay, I think I found it.
Found it.
Yeah, here's Sawyer, we have Sawyer Road here. And Brown Road. One inch overlay is 3,450 feet, 21 feet wide. We had a total price of $51,260.
Is that with the shoulders?
I think we do the shoulders, actually, might be just separate.
And what do you have for Sawyer?
Oh, that's where the gravel shoulders, $51,000, correct gravel shoulders. So we take that number and add the others.
Okay.
How much for Sawyer?
Sawyer was 56,400, is it? And that's with the shoulders as well?
That's with shoulders as well.
And is Sawyer gonna need the $15,000 worth of consideration?
I think it's money well spent in the long run. I think we gotta add gravel, we should probably clean up the shoulders. I think, you know, the ditch line, excuse me, clean up the ditch line so that they're, we want to start off on the right foot.
If you need to add drainage or improve drainage on there, the time to do it is before you have paving, for sure.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think we want to address that before.
How long is that section of Sawyer Road?
1,200 feet.
1,200 feet, alright. And 56,400, that's just the paving and the shoulders?
Yes.
Was there something on there about if we bundled two of them, there's a savings? Is that on that sheet?
Oh, yes it is, yep.
It's 12,000 and something?
If we do the, yep, if we do the two roads together, that saves the town 12,840 dollars.
So is that already deducted from the shoulders you did? What two roads together are we doing?
Brown Road and Sawyer Road.
So...
I shouldn't let you look at that one.
I know the lift.
Let's set the price.
The lift and the base coat is thicker than the top coat, right?
Correct.
So...
And it's a different material slightly, isn't it?
Different, right, yep. So, but I'm looking at 1,200 feet for $56,000, I'm looking at 3,450 feet for $51,000. So that's, that seems to me to be way out of whack in terms of...
You're doing a different deal here.
Yep.
You're talking an old life versus a grading job, paving job.
Okay.
You get grading costs in there and other things.
Alright, so that includes the prep?
Yes, on Sawyer Road.
Okay.
So, and you also, that 56 number, that has a surface coat in there, you're not gonna do that this year, you're saying, so that'll be taken out of that 56 dollars. So that'll be less.
Alright, so that's base coat and top coat?
That's everything.
Okay.
I would say so.
Alright, so if we want to...
So how much are we reducing? How much is the top coat?
Well, we price it together like you're gonna do it together, but you're not going to, so...
You gotta reprice it.
Yeah. You have to relook that. And pricing, I'll just speak about that a little bit. You know, I'm looking at the program what was laid out here. When you start doing things in small increments, your price goes high. As you say, when you start doing 100 feet of road versus, we can pave in about 150 ton an hour. So when you're doing thousand-ton road, you get that all done in a day. When you have to jump around and do smaller sections, you're mobilizing, you're turning it around, you're doing things, you get nothing, you don't get anything done.
It's not cost effective.
Not cost effective for the town. I always told Jim, when you're reclaiming, try to do like 3,500 feet minimum. And sometimes it doesn't work, sometimes you have a road, "We've gotta do this 1/4 foot section, Frank, we just gotta do it." But if you have roads that are 7,000 feet long, like Brown Road, try to bust it in half.
Yep, yep.
Now you get a good bang for your buck on the reclaim guys, because 3,500 feet's a day's work. So, and you get your paving number up there, it's gonna get up towards 8, 900 a ton. If you can lay your work out and get 1,000 ton a day on paving, that's a good day of paving. It's cost effective, we can give the best price out there and it's a big bang for the town. Jim and I have had many of these conversations over the years since we've been doing your work to approach it that way, such as Union of Offroad. I think we did that.
Did we buy it in two years, Jim?
Two years.
Yes, then did we talk with the third year or talk with the second year? I think we might have talked with the third year, didn't we?
Yes, I believe so.
Third year, correct, yeah, we did it all.
That's a good way, you get probably the best price that you could get to do that job. Versus if you committed to a quarter-mile, 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 your prices are gonna go way high. And you're not gonna get anything done for your money. It's gonna take you longer to get around your town.
When you look at these, this list, let's look at Federal Corner and the third road down.
Yep.
Where it says $50,000 to do a quarter of a mile of rehabilitate and rebuild.
Yep.
Is that our expectation for you?
How long is Federal Corner Road? I don't even know.
It's a quarter-mile segment, is what they're...
It's a quarter-mile segment, but I'm thinking, if you did a mile of it, is it gonna be $200,000?
It would be less.
I'd hope so.
So these are the state prices that are in here that they're working with. And that's pretty, well, I would say that's, we're not looking at apples and apples. We got about a quarter of a mile on Sawyer Road and base coat, top coat, Frank has said 56,000. This is a quarter-mile reclaim and base coat is 51,000. So my guess is your price for 51, for that quarter-mile would be a little less than 51,000, but that's, that's the pricing that they...
I'm trying to package together a mile. So if we get, let's look at Northland Road.
Yep.
Which is exactly a mile. Can we just get that reclaimed and repaved in one year?
The whole thing.
Yeah, do the whole thing. But at 50,000 bucks a quarter-mile, that's gonna waste our budget pretty quickly.
Yeah, if you do the whole mile, it won't be 50,000 a quarter-mile.
Right.
You know, you look at...
What was that, the old one?
Oh, Brown Road. You look at Brown Road. To do Brown Road, we did the whole thing. Yeah, you're under 100,000 to do a mile. Okay.
But, but how many culverts need to be redone?
Well, that's, you know, all that prep work, and Jim's done a good job over the years, I feel, through your town. He comes in, like on Ledge Road, fucks the rocks, fixes the colors, does all that. That all needs to be done for us. Like, you know, the ditching, any tree removal. Now, canopy old roads and water is what kills out, kills all our roads.
Right, yes.
And a lot of our roads have never been built with proper subbase. And every town stuck with it, like my town and Limerick is, your town is, and all the good subbases. So we're trying to take alternative methods to a total rebuild and make it as cost-effective and get as much longevity as we can.
Well, Sawyer Road is a perfect example. He had more stumps than he had rocks plus wires plus...
Oh, I'll have to look for it.
So, yeah, could be that worked out. And as a part, you know, in my town for a while, they had paving number higher than the prep work. And I've got it all the time, we can tell you, "You need to get that number up with your paving number so that your guy can prep the roads properly so they'll last for you."
On Federal Corner Road, for example, I personally have viewed five culverts that if they aren't in failure or near failure. I had a couple of other questions, but I wanna go after $800 and cents.
So I hope you get the idea that, you know, doing that longer stretches of road in the paving world, it's easier in some other applications by crack seal from the new shorter sections. You're not always much equipment around you. They can do that more easily and the price doesn't get affected quite so badly as it does with the paving world.
So, in my ideal world...
The other thing, Chip, maybe you're thinking of is, you know, coming up on a mile of roadwork, but it needs to be in the same location.
Right.
Not paying the cost and doing it like that.
That's what I'm hoping to do.
My ideal world would pave, finish coat, Brown Road, crack seal, or chip seal, Ledge Hill Road, do Sawyer Road, and do all of Northland Road. Now, I think we'd come up to $285,000. If you gave us a little break on Ledge Hill Road.
Well, 285 also includes the prep. So if we identify 285 of paving, then...
You have no money for prep.
There's no money for prep, so we gotta be in there someplace, but...
So I think if we look at the, and I'm just looking at the...
Yep, yep.
We don't have anything left to do on Dergan.
Dergan's done.
It's almost done.
So you got the catch basin at the corner with the state, you gotta get sorted out this prep.
We gotta choose something, whether we do Dame Road, Northland Road, or Federal Corner Road. Those are the three that I see that need some more work.
Have you guys driven over Dame Road recently?
Yeah.
Oh my God, that fell apart bad.
Yeah. But that's more than one year's work, that's two years' work.
Oh, correct, but there is, there is a pretty bad section around that sharp corner. But it is starting to extend out.
Yeah.
Do we have the...
So some of these roads, maybe, you know, things there early this spring, you know, we're trying to help you out, writing some of these sections with Jim, putting cost analysis to it for you. So you can come in to a meeting like this and evaluate, well, where do we want to have, this is what we can kidnap.
I mean, now, Jim, this list of priorities and the copy of the map, I think maybe that's right, we need a second meeting.
Yep.
Figure out where we're gonna...
And even, you know, I even know in the chip seal world, those are these other things, you know, like crack sealing, you gotta lay your workout form to get a good price.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, it's...
Sometimes people go, "I'm not knocking this earlier or anything you've done here." You gotta start someplace to get a plan. They don't understand sometimes how mobilization and putting this together affects the price, which affects how long it's gonna take you to get around your town. Doing these small sections, it takes a long time.
The frameworks that this kind of work gets done in are not exact. For instance, why do we look at quarter-mile segments in grading the road? You gotta start someplace, you know, you can't, if you say we're gonna look at every 10 feet, I mean, you know. Or on the other hand, you say, "We're only gonna give a grade for a half mile," you know, and you got a real bad spot and the rest of it's pretty good. So that's, I think, why we end up looking at quarter-mile segments. Then the person that's doing this is looking at all the different pavement treatments and based upon this condition index, you know, they got a matrix that says, "Well, at this, you know, at this condition, if you do this treatment, it's gonna extend the life." So then we end up looking at something that's quarter-mile segments that from a productivity and a cost standpoint are less than optimal.
But you can use this information, good information, to try and...
Exactly.
Like you're doing here today.
Yeah, exactly, so...
I mean, if you look at the lead, all of Ledge Hill Road is covered and I think they're looking for another five years out of that before we have to do anything else.
Yep, yep.
Would you agree with that statement?
Are you talking to me?
Ledge Hill Road will last another five years from Dame Road to the corner?
It's getting bad, I mean, it's really pronounced right now with the frost eaves. This year is, you know, probably larger amount of frost eaves than normal, but the section that from Dame Road up to the 171, the cracks are all coming back and then once you start getting the cracks...
That was never ground.
It was never ground, it was never...
Needs to be reclamation.
The next time we do it, obviously it should be done correctly. But the cracks are coming back and it's just a matter of time before that really falls apart.
So my question is, in your judgment, is it gonna go another five years?
Well, what do we have for a number for non-paving costs?
Typically, typically we put 50 grand in for the road prep, but as part of the paving article, that's where we've been in the past. 50 grand of that is for road prep work and the rest of it is for paving. It is arbitrary. It's pretty much worked out in the past, but that's not to say...
So 240,000 or 235,000 dollars worth of Mr. Carroll's work?
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for?
Yep.
200, yeah, plus Sawyer's, now we got...
Well, we got 50, so we got 300,000 between the two articles. Got $300,000 to do prep and paving. And if you say 50,000 of that is prep work, then you got 250,000.
I guess my goal would be if you try to do 225,000 worth of paving, that would give us a little bit of a leeway in case we have a problem. But at the same time, if you come in and go, "Well, we're gonna come up 25 feet short," well, then we gotta, you know...
Figure out how to...
Well, we're gonna paint that.
We'll do that before.
So as we look at some of these, for instance...
You know, the crack seal, you know, like Ledge Road, I've seen some crack seals.
Yep.
It helps keep water out, crack seal and some of the other applications.
I've been led to believe the crack sealing is good for roads where it's not heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic. That's what other towns tell me. Ledge Hill Road is probably the second busiest for truck traffic.
Well, if you've got...
No crack seal.
If you've got cracks, if you've got cracks and you don't do something, they're gonna get way worse, right? If you do something, they're not gonna go away, but...
And the number that I punched through here is chip sealing the whole thing. We don't need to chip seal the whole road, but that's at 7,000, what, 7,300, 7,800 dollars a quarter-mile. So do we do some... So do, do we do some chip sealing on that road? Let's do a little more than crack seal, because it's got a little more traffic volume. But it's, I mean, it's six times as much money for chip seal. So those are the options that we're looking at. And then try to, I mean, are there any other roads that I'm not thinking about? If you don't have to run, tell me where I'm at. Or, yeah, often, or Melvin Village, I try to stay out of that as much as possible.
There.
I don't wanna get them angry.
You're not allowed in?
I'm not allowed in. I've got a restraining order.
Melvin is welcoming to everybody.
So, I think the other roads are all starting to deteriorate, but not at the same rate as these roads that are listed.
So if we could get North Line Road even half done, I think that would be a good.
Yep.
Place to be. And get Sawyer Road done, get Brown Road done, and then do as much sealing as we can on North Line, on Ledge Hill Road, and then maybe catch some of Dame Road, I don't know. I mean, I'm starting to spread our money pretty thin.
Well, it's, it's no choice that we have to do, it's gonna have to be done in two years. We know that. So we just gotta make up our mind.
Are you going to make this schedule you came up with last year? Or does this get thrown away?
I'm kinda just hanging on to it a little bit. But, you know.
I don't see Ledge Hill Road on there even in two thousand twenty-eight, do I?
Yeah, I don't, I think we.
Let's, let's, let's stay focused on what we're.
Yeah, we've got a ten-year program here.
What we're dealing with.
I think we have to try to.
So this, from two thousand nineteen, we disregard?
Yep. It's really only good for four years in my mind. The road deteriorates so fast that you can't. You gotta pick.
But these guys are willing to come back and take a look. I mean, log all of what we do in two thousand nineteen into the system, what we do in two thousand twenty, load that into the system, and then come back and do a resurvey, see how it's working. If we have to make some adjustments, we'll make adjustments, but at least some of the, you have a ten-year plan going.
Yep.
You're working on.
I mean, nobody can really predict ten years out, which roads are gonna be worse than others.
Right. Working.
It's just a lucky guess.
Well, the model that they use is, is, I, I think, my understanding is it wasn't just pulled out of thin air, but it has a number of variables that go into it. And some of those variables, we provided them with information with, is our estimation or opinion of some of this stuff. So it's not exact, but it's, it's a starting point for us.
I think it's gonna be a pretty exact it. If you play it out five, seven years, I think at that point, the traffic patterns aren't gonna change from Tufton Road over five to six years. So they're gonna be able to see how long chip seal lasts, how long crack seal lasts, how long, you know, a full reconstruction lasts on our geography here. So I think it's gonna get a lot closer when we get out there. And at least, as asked by our voters, we can say we have a plan.
Right. And I guess my, one of my biggest questions is, the difference between chip sealing and a one-inch overlay, what is the best?
I don't know. I think that's up to Mr. Carroll.
Well, I can tell you that one of the guys that works for me works for Moulton Brook, and he said that after they did chip sealing, the people that have to maintain the roads as far as in the winter were very unhappy because you just couldn't keep it, you had to treat it twice as much, twice as often. It created pockets for water and stuff to sit in. And they, he strongly recommends not doing that.
I've heard the same thing.
I'm gonna, sorry, I don't want to do all of it at once.
I think if we give prices on both, that's fine. I'm gonna consider any information apocryphal until we see it.
We'll give you a big comparison.
Yeah.
And you could talk to some of your neighboring towns, like Moulton Brook, a couple of works, people there, and will, I believe, will hurt us in chip seal. And get their opinion. They've been doing it for a while. You haven't been, and maybe, maybe an option you wanna look at. Some of these options are, are there, they may not be the quality you're looking for, but it gives you, buys you time.
Right.
To get back to it.
Right.
There's some value in all of it.
You know, the, the, the model price here for chip seal is seventy-eight hundred dollars a quarter mile. I don't know what the, what the one-inch overlay price would be. There's an inch and a half overlay is nineteen thousand dollars a mile. And again, this is the state numbers, so, you know, it's.
And we're not against recommendations other than what we have on, on hand here. Just try and get something put together. So if we do a one-inch overlay on two miles of road, then, and that's your recommendation, that's fine.
I don't mind trying the chip seal. I mean, we, we could do, we could do that certainly. I'm just wondering if Ledge Hill's a road that I wanna start on, because from what I hear, it gets, it's twice as slippery in a lot of time. That's probably the worst road to try it on, I see you doing it somewhere in flat section. I'd rather not see it.
All right, we'll come back, I mean, we're gonna meet again, right?
Yep.
So come back with your recommendations.
And I can give us people at Allstate some, I know I'm just getting myself educated on some of the applications that they do, like the chip seals and that. And there's different kinds of chip seals, with rubber and some without.
Yeah.
And I can get Bruce to price out, or let me to do something cost effective, like a half mile or mile or mile and a half of the road, and I can go back with the price for that.
Great. Yeah, Bruce was the guy that came in and met us.
Correct, yeah. And, and he works doing the work in Moulton Brook. And you know my guy, Andy.
Yep.
And Andy's the one that told me, Andy used to work for Pike's Paving, he's very knowledgeable, very knowledgeable.
Yep.
He said, you don't wanna do that.
I just, we wanna try to get as much done as we possibly can to make things last as long as we possibly can. So we can do all of Ledge Hill Road, or two-thirds of Ledge Hill Road, or all of Dame Road, or something, so we get some nice big product going out there. And it's efficient for Mr. Carroll and it's cost effective for us. Perfect.
Sir. I'd have some general questions. When is the best time to do this road work in Tufton Brook? My thought is to do it by school buses that run.
You know, the, the paving season is, spring of the year is, is people usually, those that go, I'd say, more proactive, get their work ready earlier, get it done earlier, just usually get better pricing. And you're all in for work. By the time you get into July, you've already built this backlog of work, like in any seasonal business.
Right.
And as, you know, people get filled up, the prices change, you know.
Weather interferes with schedules and.
Yep, yep.
So earlier in the season, you get into it, the better, right?
We, that's consistently what we've done in your town.
Yes.
And it sparked out around the wall, I think. You know, we don't get in too early, you don't get in too early, but in appropriate time.
And I remember we found like last year, by the time we got Brown Road into the schedule, I mean, we were toward the end of the season because your schedule had filled up and, and it was just.
Well, we gotta late start on deciding to.
Well, that's what I say, but, but again, that wasn't Frank, that was us, that it was, you know, pulled the trigger on that project labor, and we ended up getting the paving done later, yeah. Does your company do culverts as part of road preparation?
We can, but usually, I mean, Jim's been doing your town work and stuff. I would outsource it. We wouldn't do it personally ourselves.
You'd find somebody else.
I'd be fine, I'd be calling Jim to do the color.
Do you have any experience with PGA, the crushed glass that's in Wakefield?
No.
Using that in culverts?
No. I have no experience in that.
Okay. Is there any new technology coming out, or Arabs are gonna drive asphalt? Oil prices sky high or anything like that?
I think we're the largest exporter.
That's a global market question that I can't. One month a month, we sometimes go into the paving season when things happen globally in the world, because prices do get affected. And like, they spend a little better than it was a few years ago, though, they went really high. That's not good for anyone, it's not good for us, not good for you folks.
Right.
Stable's good, but the economy's gonna be stable. There's a lot of factors going on. Liquid asphalt, that's why you have escalation clauses that protects us from going out of business and protects you folks also. Because I'm hoping prices go down this year. There's some indicators in the market coming over the next couple of years, things that, the feds have regulations put on the producers of, you know, liquid asphalt, that it's gonna change the things a little bit, I think, but we'll see. It might get better for you, the consumers.
Right, and then.
That's our.
But they may, I mean, who knows, it might pass an infrastructure bill in Congress, at which point prices will go crazy, because there's be so much work out there that.
Yeah, or you may see some benefit, I know the state of New Hampshire did some things a year or two ago, didn't they? They, they gave some money to the towns.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So there's some benefits.
We still have a little of that left, too, so.
Yep.
So. But, yeah, get your dirt work done, it's an important part of this whole deal, and then try to get the decent plan. You've got some foundation now that we can work off, but see what we, we'd be glad to come over and help.
Yeah.
And any of these applications, we put some numbers and some things.
Great.
See, we get the quarter mile thing to, okay, let's, now we can tack this in a different way, you'll get around your town faster.
There's more than one way to, I guess, tackle it, and if they had five years from now, it could still be in the same, you know, condition.
There's a lot of things in my mind that can be done to make your job easier. Some towns, for example, where a snowplow hits a tree, the tree disappears. We have about a hundred of those in town. The other thing is, then you mentioned canopy? Yes, if we opened up the canopy back to the, the stone walls legally and, and what, first of all, the roots aren't going under the road, destroying the road. The other thing is, it lets, once the sun comes out, a few more hours of sunlight in, which makes.
Sounds good, probably.
The, the other thing is, cutting the trees back and doing ditches and doing culverts, do them the year before. You come in to reclaim the road and grind it up, is what other towns are doing, so. And we're headed that direction.
Yep, it's a good place to be, it's a good, good goal to do. Because, yes, we've got some bunch of culverts moving this time. We gotta, we gotta, if you can plan that far ahead, budget that way, and have that kind of plan, yeah.
Because what happens is when we're reclaiming Brown Road, all of a sudden, he bumped into a client. How did any human being know that it was inappropriate material there? So that set him back a little bit, not his fault.
We've got a culvert plan now, we've got a paving plan, I think you stick to it. You know, it's like, can we do ten culverts in here, fifteen, whatever it is?
That was my next question to him.
Budget that in. I think five years from now, it's, it's not gonna be, it will be better.
Yeah, well, my goal is to try to get the culverts done for Dame and North Line. No matter which way we go, we'll hopefully be in good shape as far as getting the culverts done, which is, that's probably the most important part.
On North Line, getting the culverts done, other than the part down by the dowel fire, there's a lot of the problem with the heaving and all the rest of it that's happening on that road.
The, the paving's shot.
Yeah.
It's all cracked everywhere.
It was twenty years ago, it was dirt.
That's true. I was thinking about that the other day when we were talking about mud season. I remember getting stuck on Dame Road in the mud, getting stuck on Sodom Road in the mud.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
North Line Road, we paid for a short time in our dinosaur years. All right, so shall we plan on a second meeting with, with this schedule together?
Sure.
What's good, how long do you figure you need to?
Well, we really need to get rid of some of the snow.
Yeah.
So, you know, as soon as we see the daylight to get out, to react really, get the width of the road, see the conditions of the ditches and some other things, get an idea, you know, I'm thinking, be early in April, maybe three, four weeks from now before we maybe come up to really get an assessment of it, where can we head here?
Oh, we need.
So if you can pick like a couple of the roads and you think you wanna be doing, so we can get, put some things together for you, so you can analyze and say, oh, we picked five roads, right? And then you sit down and say, well, we only got money enough for two. It'll give you some options of where you can head, head with things. Maybe I can come up with a cost per foot for you would be helpful.
Yep.
Down in a few towns.
Yep.
Okay, if we're gonna, we're just gonna do a chairman all way, this is the cost per foot of a twenty-one foot wide road, or if you do a reclaim for that twenty-one foot wide road with two inches base and an inch of top, this one it would be for that.
To reclaim a road is basically thirty-five thousand, right, a mile?
Um, I'd have to.
I thought that was the, something that they.
I don't have that registered in my head, but.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to get you cold.
No, it's like, um. A mile of road is eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-three squares, but you're around a buck eighty a square, I don't know what the calculator on. About twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. No, that's at twenty feet though, so.
Well, twenty feet, yeah.
We usually do twenty-one and twenty-two.
Twenty-one and twenty-two, so I add ten percent to that, so twenty-three thousand, twenty-three five.
Yeah.
You're close, you got the eye.
Well, this is.
That gives you an idea of him.
This is the list we're working on. Add to that Brown Road and Sawyer Road to begin with, and then Jim can come up with whatever other things he's looking at. And then we'll meet again on, say, the eighth of April, or second meeting in April.
I hate this one.
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and do this. Actually, I'll give you my page.
Yep, yep.
Karen, Karen can print you another one.
But each number, for instance, on Federal Corner Road, we don't say one, two, three, four, has.
You can see the numbers on the segments here, they coincide to the.
The first.
The order ID, the.
Did they give you the lengths of all these roads or what, some of them?
They gave us the quarter mile increments, then he gave us the total length.
But you have total lengths on the roads.
I do, but the, you know, the funny part is, when we measure it in his truck, they're always slightly different.
Yeah, it's always longer, right? He's got that special.
Yeah, it's always longer, no. No, but I guess they're more accurate, I mean, he has it right down, so.
The foot. Yeah. Well.
And he has his calibrated on.
Well, I think this will give you a place to start, and then if we, we calibrate it right down by driving around.
Yeah. When you're laying down asphalt, feet matter, right? When you're, when you're plowing snow or, or spreading sand, a foot this way and the other, isn't, isn't that, that big a?
Do I just hear a question? When they did the study, they measured each foot.
Okay, I also.
Millennial feet. That would be helpful, that would be helpful to me.
So we can get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jesus, we're getting organized. So you're a happy guy this morning, Mr. Marcus, and that's another seventy-nine thousand dollars up there.
Yes, that was very nice of you to put that in, appreciate that.
It's still, as I mentioned the other day, it's still gonna be tight on learning money.
It will, it's, yeah. But here it is, still snowing up as we speak.
Yes. But it's March, snow's not gonna stick long this time here.
I was thinking it wouldn't stick at all today.
Stick, no stick, stick.
Yeah.
I would like to say thank you for the work we've done in the past, Jim has done excellent work, but.
Great.
He puts a good plan together, he listens, you know, he'll always try to get you cost effective.
Right. Yep.
And he's always listens, you know, some of these roads, like Union War, segmented, like we've talked about here. Because you can't, and, and sometimes, you know, if you wanna do a section, you don't wanna do everything in one corner of the town, and how that all plays out.
Right.
So it's nice if you can have a little plan, or you can do a good section here and here, have a plan to get it completed in two or three year period. And I think he's done a good job of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you, all right?
Well, great.
We look forward to working with you.
All right. Well, thank you, Frank.
You're all.
Thanks for coming out this morning, and we agree that, uh, April eighth?
If we're gonna be meeting on the eighth, that would be perfect, but I think.
We do have a meeting on the eighth, right? So that would, if we can.
The eighth, the April is another meeting.
Yeah, so we can see if the, by the way, far as you're, you know, down that.
Right.
When do you meet after April eighth?
Uh, it's the.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
I'd say by the twenty-second for sure, we definitely. I'd say about the twenty-second for sure, we definitely have a plan for it, but if the eighth works, I'll go with that.
We get the eights together, then, yeah.
If we can't get it, then I'll blow it.
Better work it early.
Super. Yep, great.
So if we get a good plan, something else to notice. You all set on me?
Yeah.
I think we're all set.
Yep, all right.
Nice to have us.
Nice to meet you. Thanks, Frank.
Boy.
Travel safe, my friend.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Good seeing you again.
Yeah, same here.
Appreciate it, we'll be in touch.
Okay.
Take care, thank you.
Have a good day. All right. So what else is going on, Jim?
Well, so far, we've just been filing, filing and treating roads this past month, plus we had some edges washed out. So we had to repair the edges. We've also been trying to be proactive on the dirt roads. We've had to put down stone in some of the mud areas on the dirt roads, trying to keep up with that, so that they're still passable. And we did have a tire blow on the town truck this week, the front tire. So I brought it over to, uh, we were Smokey's Tire, and he said the rim was actually worn out. And he said, it's aluminum rim, because it has the weight on it, it does happen. So we did have to order a new rim and tire, but he did say that I could take the old rim and keep it, we could put the other front tire on there and keep it as a spare tire, because it wouldn't run any more than they have to, but they hit you home if you have a problem. So I ordered two front tires, so they're matching tires with one new rim. The truck does have forty thousand miles on it now, so it's seen some use, so.
It's a pretty short length of a rim.
It is. I'll be honest with you, the other town truck, last town truck, and my town trucks, when you put a wing on them, the rims usually crack.
Just from the weight?
Yep.
Plus the torque push.
I asked that question, I said, do you put a steel wheel on this? And he said, and he looked up that number, he goes, this is actually like a very, very heavy duty rim. He goes, I would stick with this rim, this is better than steel, it's not gonna crack. And this is as heavy duty as you can get, it's a special order. That was not just a off the shelf rim, so...
Not under warranty?
Not last, not last, but I don't think the rim would be...
Like tires and microblades.
Correct.
The real isn't, like, they weren't warranted originally, but I don't think it's probably under forty thousand miles.
But I, I mean, I... But basically, the edges of the rim got sharp, I mean, they started to dig into the side of the tire. I've never seen it either, but on the steel rims, the rims would just crack. We replaced the steel rim on the old town truck almost every two years, so. It's just the nature of it.
It's that extra weight of the...
The wing.
Yeah.
A torturous piece of equipment.
Yeah.
If you're a piece of equipment, you wouldn't wanna be that one.
Is this work session just for roads or for some of the other things Jim's working on? Well, uh, I mean, anything, anything we got, certainly, is... You have any ideas?
I guess, granite post. On here and road.
I'm familiar with that, but I think we've discussed before that...
Do nothing?
Well, they don't have, there's no, they don't have a final setback. What I was told by the, uh, the post master, I believe it was, is that it would be nice if it, it's safer for them so that they could at least have the car halfway off the road when they're stopping. We don't, we don't have an ordinance against it, though, unfortunately.
Planning board does have widths of shoulders, and it's supposed to be at least two feet to four feet, right?
The further off the road, the better, and I'm willing to work with anybody that wants to move their post back. You know, some people say, well, the shoulder's not wide enough in that spot because there's a ditch line. I'm willing to work with them, we can adjust, or we repair any area that we need to, so that we can get the mailboxes back further. So I'm not quite sure how you're gonna handle that, but I think that maybe we approach people and wanna work with them individually and try to get the ones that are the worst.
One thing that I'm aware of, in looking at the rural, the postal service rural mailbox dimensional thing, where they, you know, they got a little picture that shows it should be this, this height range off the road and this far back off the road.
Off from the curb.
From the curb, right, and, but it also says that posts should not, should be of a material that, uh, if hit, don't cause a problem. So they're suggesting wood, not granite, uh, and not, not steel posts set in concrete and that sort of thing. So that's one thing that came to my mind. I guess another question is, Lloyd is focusing on this one post.
And there's many.
And, and if, if we have issues with posts, then we ought to address not just an individual, but, but however many we have for which are an issue, and, and work with those folks, or, yeah. Maybe the appropriate thing is for this board to send letters to these people.
Because there are the ones that fell on Black Bear, one that are painting a post right on the edge of the road as well.
So, you know, it's, uh, if, if, if we're gonna address an issue, we need to address it not just to one specific individual that, that, uh, that we see when we drive by every day. Your guys are out there plowing snow, you know where the, where the, uh, the problem posts, or the, the mailbox posts that caused a difficulty with plowing and are at greater risk of being hit because of where they're located. And, uh, so that would be my thought, is to, to come up with a list of however many there are, and, and address them all, rather than just a one individual that has a situation there.
Maybe we do create them on this.
Well, that's, yeah, the way to go. You gotta determine it.
Yeah.
A set number back from the road, and if they need, if it requires some road edge improvement or something like that, then, you know, I'm happy to work with them, it's to everybody's benefit in the long run.
Right. We don't wanna make it difficult for the mail carrier, we don't wanna make it difficult for the plow driver, we don't wanna make it difficult for the homeowner. We wanna have is a situation that works.
Correct.
For everybody, and...
They'll be drawn to all this, please.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I'll slip down to the others.
Speaking of mail delivery, um, I noticed they're using little trucks to, the postal, postal service trucks to do the delivering these routes now because the guy that had tough to grow neck, doesn't, he doesn't have the route anymore, he gave it up, they can't find somebody.
And there are two people down.
They, whoever's delivering here is off with illness or something, and so they're running the little postal service truck guys around to...
He was sending tough some bro, they're getting their mail at eight-thirty at night.
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
This is a little bit of issue on, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, I did hear that they don't pay a lot for that job either.
Well, and we had the guy that was doing tough to grow neck, that's been doing it for forty years. What I heard is they, they wanted to, uh, to cut his contract by thirty grand, and he said, uh, no. So, yeah.
Now, I noticed that they're starting to get your supply of signs.
Yes.
I guess the police department has been working with you on that.
Yes, we tried to drive a few posts so far, and we're running into a frost, it's, some spots, we've had a couple of spots.
Anyway, you're on it, as soon as, as soon as we can put posts in, we'll be done, yeah.
Yes, we actually have a couple of broken stop signs that we've been trying to put back in, but just, it's not going in.
Okay, we have all the signs for the dogs and the wherths?
We do.
Okay, boat launches?
I believe they all came in the same order.
The beach, there's no parking signs that are missing.
We, we have, I ordered, I think you and I actually made up the list.
Right.
And we ordered them, I believe, they're all in.
We can take another look at it and just, if there's some more that turned up missing or whatever, we can figure that out, right?
Do we need, you probably do wanna talk about maybe getting something in a P-19 on the beach there as quickly as possible.
Well, whenever, whenever's reasonable, I don't expect you to...
Well, I, I think, well, I remember talking to the chief, and he was concerned about the parking, and particularly the, uh, the bough houses coming off, so I think that they have to come off in the next...
Thirty-first. Well, the bough houses have, the bough houses have to be off by April first, and a bough house cannot be parked in the right of way. And the police department are already working on it.
So, I think we wanna actually try to get those signs up first to help with that situation, so.
Are we responsible for county road breaks? There's no warning signs or wait signs or anything. Is that the state's responsibility, or is it ours?
We have always put up the signs as the state requires. They contact me, they, well, I believe they send us all a letter, we receive the same letter, and they tell us how they're supposed to be posted, and they check immediately.
Okay, and do they pay for it, or do we pay for it?
We've been paying for it.
Okay. Is the police department working with you on posting its red ass sign?
Yes, yep, I have the post for that over here as well.
Great.
Yep.
As you come out of the transfer station, there's a little stop sign to stop traffic?
Yep.
Okay, police officer pointed it out to me, who doesn't work in this town, that's not a legal stop sign, it's not the right size.
Yeah, we did put that up, I'm not sure who put that up. I think that's been there for a long time.
But Sergeant Way is a legal way, it's a town road and...
Okay, so...
So it's, you're talking about inside's the transfer station, right?
Yes.
Not, not on the road?
No, it's the intersection where the road divides, right?
Yep.
Well, it's, it's...
What road divides?
No, it's, it's, it's the dri, it's the parking lot of the transfer station when you're coming out. So you think we need to put a different stop sign there, or, or we can't enforce it?
Someone just mentioned it to me, and I said I will pass it on.
So it's not the one at the junction of one seven one?
No. Uh, speaking of stop signs, is this, is there any money in the budget this year to do a few stop lines, or is that for another year?
Let's see how the spring goes, but I would like to do that, let's get a few out there.
This is what I would recommend, is to consider, if there's money and the board wants to do it, is do the five roads that intersect with one seven one.
I agree with that.
It's close by, uh, all of that. If it doesn't work, then we haven't, you know, spent money in the entire town.
And you have the name of the guy that does the wording from Ober, right?
Yes, I had talked to him, but I haven't got a price from him, he has not given me a price yet. I have to make contact with him.
And I'm think, I'm thinking ahead, but this year here, does it make sense to get the, get the lines marked earliest in the year as possible? Rather than latest, I think it slows the summer traffic down.
In the past, we've always had to wait for the paving to be done.
Yes.
So this year, we're gonna try to be first in the list, we've already talked to him about that, and we put the proposal...
And you think that, and you think he'll be able to come in at budget and not over the last couple of years? Kind of springs it on you a little bit.
He gave us the same prices last year. We had a quote for it already, and he came in, same prices last year, but there always is that little line on the bottom that says, you know, the kind of protection in case the cost of materials go up.
Well, okay, and the last thing is, are you still working on getting some paperwork for catch basins?
I do have a list with me, and there's, I think it says, it has a list of fifty-something, and then it says, plus X amount more, we have seventy-one in total, but it doesn't have them listed. So I gotta find the correct one, which I believe...
Okay, I'll give you... I had another question, and this was brought to my attention. We have some catch basins that we share, one of the state, you know, our roads create a problem, for example, with one oh nine A, several different locations, and they've worked with you on it. I also see where there's two catch basins that are in the parking lot at Melvin Church. Those go into our lake, and I don't know if the church would, would pay for their guy to, you know, for your guy to clean them up, to my law.
The church, the church takes responsibility for it and gets it cleaned, I've talked to the guys there before, so. It's, it's, you know, it's private catch basin on private property, so.
But, but it goes on the public property?
Well, the water drains down the hill, but, yeah, but...
I'm not familiar with those, I mean, I've never cleaned them on anything, so.
I'm not looking to, for the town to pick up the bill or anything, but there are some areas that, you know, and the nice thing about this community is what public and private works together, so.
Yeah, so we're good to work with each other.
Anything else? Yeah. Do we wanna review the snow removal and ice control procedures documents today?
Have you reviewed that?
I, I read through it just a few weeks ago, um, and I guess there really isn't anything as far as pushing snow across the road, you know, but we've talked about...
That's, that's needs a town ordinance, right?
I believe so.
I think, but more importantly, it's, it's, is something in that policy driving our winter costs up? Or making it less controllable? So, review it from that standpoint, I guess that would be my, my ask.
The, the one thing that, I'll see right off the bat at the top, and I didn't go through it, but the mind toothed one that talks about the town, town only one six wheeler dump truck, well, we know we have a ten wheeler now, only, so we need to up to, to update that. But, you know, this talks about sand and salt mix, and when only salt is used, and plow route priorities, and et cetera. And it would be my suggestion that if you take these two things and just go through and annotate them, that, uh, we can sit down and update it to reflect the way we operate today, or maybe a, a difference in philosophy. You can take these with you if you, if you want.
Uh, if that's an extra copy, I believe I have them.
Yeah, so, and I, my sense is that it's, it's, uh, that the time that we spent as a group discussing is better spent if we've all gone through and made notes ahead of time, rather than just sitting here going through line by line. So, you know, if, if you look at these with respect to, here's how we're doing things today, here's what the two thousand and ten ordinance or, or procedure says we do, and is it the same, or should we change it? Or maybe we're doing things a little different than what we said we were gonna do, and makes sense to get back to doing it that way? Or maybe there's a more efficient way to do it today than in the past? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, yep, okay.
What's the difference between these two?
Well, they're, they're both, and they're both top procedures. I mean, one is, talks about snow and ice removal, and the other one talks about, uh, uh, winter operations, so. I don't...
I'll be honest with you, it's, it's been a long time, but I think when I started first taking the T squared classes.
Yeah.
I had a class on that, and at the time, we had no policy. And that's, was something that I thought was important to protect the town.
Yep.
So we have, so that's what I kinda learned with the class, and that's how I came up with that, to help protect the town and kinda explain.
I know you've worked to adjust your Sanders and Sorettas, so it's... I know you've worked to adjust your Sanders and Sorettas, so it's four hundred pounds, uh, of salt.
I, I used, we're doing it the rate of three hundred, but, yeah.
Okay, so, but it's four hundred in there, so, like he said, there's some penmanship, things like that. I, I had five or six of those that I circled.
So, I think I purposely put four hundred in there so that if I was off with the calibration a little bit or something like that, that it doesn't...
Yep, makes sense to me.
Gave me a little leeway. Uh, you know, 'cause we can adjust them on the fly if we need to and we will. I know if I start spinning going up a hill, these, these big ten wheelers are two-wheel drive. You're not climbing a hill pushing a snow plow without putting down sand. If I feel that start to spin, I churn up that thing.
Yes, sure, sure.
I've come down the hill backwards before and it's not fun. Once it stops, you're done.
That's why you're so thin. I know what you're talking about.
All right.
All right.
So, when you come back for Mr. Carroll's meeting, maybe we can run through that.
Yep.
And figure out, maybe by then we can get, um, a tabulation of how many snow events there were so that we can kind of get an idea of what our cost per mile is to do snow removal. Are there any changes or benefits dealing one way or another? Should we get two six wheelers versus a ten wheeler and a six wheeler? Do we get two ten wheelers, which I think is what we currently use now?
Correct. Um, yeah, okay, put a little thought into that.
Yeah, just so that we...
You know, I think our biggest expense, you know, that occurred really this year was the amount of material between sand and salt that we use. It's just much harder than any of the previous years.
And labor. Labor costs aren't cheap. And it's the guy sitting there driving the truck hour after hour after hour after hour.
Which, which brings up another question in my mind. The sand shed that you have, that's, we've been using that for how long, that particular shed?
Well, back to Mitch Kobe's.
Yeah, quite a lot of time.
Is it of adequate, is it of adequate size for the needs of the town today?
The salt shed in particular is definitely not. It's very small.
You know, so, those are things, uh, I'm guessing that when they were built, they were sized to meet the town's need. You know, that the town's needs changed since then. I don't know. They, you know, if we get more miles of paved road that we deal with today or that storm events are different or something, so...
I think the demand is different today on how, what the roads need to be kept. That has changed. So, in that, in our class, the...
Yeah.
And lawsuits are more prevalent, so we have to...
Yeah, wow. So, and so as, as more vehicles have four-wheel drive, we want more driving, right?
More vehicles on the road and more people expect that they can drive in the winter, snowstorm.
So, at any rate, the size of the salt shed, the size of the sand shed, you know, do, do they adversely infect, impact how we get the job? And, you know, how we take delivery some of the materials and that sort of thing. And, uh, to me, that's part of the overall adequacy of the operation. So, are there other things that are impediments to getting the job done in the facility?
I'll talk with my guys and see if we can all come up with some ideas of how to speak this up and...
Yeah. Good. All right.
Okay.
Anything else for Jim today?
Thank you, sir. Let's not rush back, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. You go make a copy of this mileage.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that. I didn't hear that come across the table. I didn't know we sold a six-wheeled dump truck. I haven't heard that come across the table. Bill mentioned we just have a ten wheeler.
Yeah, we, we sold a six wheeler this past fall by sealed bid.
Okay, it must've been a real shot segment because I must've missed it or it's on tape someplace. I was just curious, that's all. I didn't realize it.
I'm, I'm sure bid opening was at a meeting you were here.
Yeah.
And bid openings are always at the beginning of the meeting, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe you were...
I wasn't listening. Yeah, probably.
Yep.
Oh, goodness. Excuse me. So, we're, uh, we're all set for going into that public again?
Actually, I play a bit of correspondence, a signature thing for you.
All right.
Oh, you wanna do that?
Yeah. Yep. All right. So, all right, let's take a look at correspondence here. We have a notice for publication and posting of a public hearing for acceptance of Aquatic Resource Mitigation Fund grant from the Department of Environmental Services in the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars and a land and community heritage investment program, LCHIP grant in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred grand dollars. These, these grants will be used by the Conservation Commission to acquire properties in the Great Meadows area. And, uh, we will be, be holding this, um, hearing on, at a regular meeting on Monday, May eighth.
Or April eighth, right?
April eighth, I'm, April eighth. I'm sorry, Monday, April eighth. Yeah, so that looks, that looks good.
Okay.
Yep. I, I think that's good to go.
That's good to have.
Correspondence from the town moderator, uh, with the results of the recount of our town election. And, uh, he reports that the, the total vote count was exactly the same as was counted on election day. So, good news for the process we have of, of county ballots. Correspondence from the Lakes Region Planning Commission requesting nominations for the two, 2019 awards, the Kim Ayers Award, the Award of Excellence and the Community Service Awards. Nominations are due by Friday, April twenty-sixth. On Wednesday, April third, Joint Loss Safety Committee will be offering training, uh, conducted by, uh, a person from Primex on the topics of slip trips and falls, back injury prevention and bloodborne pathogens. And the training will be held at the Central Fire Station. Is that right? Nine thirty, eleven thirty, and twelve thirty, two thirty.
I'll go to the nine thirty class.
I'm sorry, it'll be held at the town offices right here. So, uh, all right. And my understanding is that they're not, they're not being offered twice. They're being offered, right?
In two sessions, I believe.
Morning and afternoon. So, the morning session and the afternoon session aren't the same.
Oh, I understood they were the same.
They are the same?
That's how I understood them, but I could have...
I don't, I, I apologize. I don't remember. We talked about it a while back, but, uh...
I think we picked one.
Trip, slip and fall. I don't think it's gonna take the whole day, is it?
No, so trip and fall, back injury prevention, bloodborne pathogens. Okay, so there's a morning session and an afternoon session. Lloyd, you're going in the morning?
Yes, please.
All right. You're gonna be attending?
I don't think so.
No?
He's already fallen off his ladder.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, all right. So, and the intent is that we arrange schedules so that all employees can attend. Uh, that's great.
Are you gonna go there?
Huh?
Will you be there?
Uh, yes, I may.
Okay.
But I can go to the afternoon session.
Okay, I'll say if you're gonna, I'll have to post it if you're together, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, hopefully we can get, uh, get all employees in attendance of one or the others. All right. Correspondence back and forth with Chief Shigori relative to the police facility, uh, design work that's going on. Questions, I think you've seen the questions back and forth about what they're working on. Um, and, uh, I think it makes sense that we have them come back and meet with us and the chief and just see where we're at at this point. They, they're, they're kind of in the impasse on one of the, one of the options and looking for some direction. Uh...
So, should we bring them in on...
I'm sorry.
Should we bring them in on the eighth as well?
Um...
You don't have much on the first. The eighth, you kind of have quite a...
But did I, did I see an email from him suggesting you may not be around on the first?
Uh, I think we're okay. It was next week. The gentleman wasn't around, so I think we're all right.
So, I, I think having him come in on the first or a work session is, is fine, but, yeah.
You have a half an hour thing with DRA on the first and then that was your only other appointment.
What do they want?
Forget it. It's with Rod and DRA. It's not, I forget now, so we have the time.
Okay. All right. Then we have correspondence from the, uh, DES on dams, Tuftonboro dams. And this is, uh, where are they doing this? I'm, I'm missing. Where they're, where they're conducting this, uh...
Oh, very last page. Is it Manchester? One more page, I think, is the one.
June fourth in Manchester. This is, uh, are, are they specifically discussing our dams? Is this just a general thing? Well, this is the preparedness conference on, on June, Emergency Preparedness Conference. Is that something that maybe Chief Hamilton...
He was copied on all that and perhaps he will. He probably will.
I'm guessing that, that this is, this is probably something that's way more than, than I want to...
I look for curiosity along this big paper right here.
Yep. Yep.
And there's some names on there that haven't owned property or haven't been alive for years, so I don't know how accurate that information is.
You refer to that?
Yes. They're, they're right, on that sheet right there. Let's hold it over.
Yeah.
And we see there's blanks in there on who it has and...
Excuse me?
All about. There's, there's three locations there that certainly are not common.
So, that's something we want to be...
And do they have the new dam up at, uh, Hidden Valley on it?
Uh, on Laura Beach Pond. It's out here.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's, have I missed any correspondence here?
Just the Tuftonboro Times submission. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I looked that up. It's...
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's good to me.
All right, I'll submit it.
Okay.
All right. So, now we have a signature file, the MS two thirty-two, which is report of appropriations actually voted. And this needs...
Does it have the seventy-five thousand dollar change? Couldn't see it right off.
I, I, I didn't...
We increased the appropriations at town meeting, right?
Yes.
Very good.
Yep. So, uh, I, I didn't compare this line item by line item.
But they were, they shot over four million.
Yep.
Pretty close.
Yes.
Yeah. So...
Come after with it.
I lose streets. I can double check that against the total that we, we have in here now. Yeah. Yes, that has the revised... All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion we sign that MS...
Two thirty-two, two thirty-two.
I'll second Mr. Jim.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next, we have, uh, three yield warrants to approve. First is for sixteen dash one dash five in the amount of two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Fifty-four dash one dash thirteen in the amount of two thousand five hundred eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents. And seventy-one dash two dash one, uh, in the amount of seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
I'll move the sound blows.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, next we have a request of an extension to file a temporary report for PID sixty-eight dash three dash two.
I'll make a motion for the committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have a letter to the Governor of Tuftonboro School District, uh, has to do with stu, uh, student residency in the town of Tuftonboro with a list of specific individuals that they question whether they are currently residing in the town.
That's my job. It's, I'll take a copy of it and get back to you next month, week.
Okay.
So, we...
So, we need, we need to sign this and send it to...
No, I need to verify whether they are residents, so you can test to it. No, I need to verify whether they are residents, so you can test to it.
Oh, you're saying it's not ready for signature?
It's not ready for signature.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Jackie and Heather.
Well, there's at least two names that there's, we're curious about.
All right, so that's a work in progress.
And that just came up in the last couple of days.
Yep, so we have pole license with Public Service Company of New Hampshire. This is for a new pole on Durgen Road, so.
Yeah, you approved it in January, but they went through and typed in the right information and use our template, so you've already approved it in January, but I see they redated it, so. Let's just make sure.
There's another one from another utility that hasn't filled in the blanks.
Yes, that's true, but I talked to a lawyer, and they're not too concerned about that.
All right, so, I'm sorry, you're, you're saying we already approved this?
You did in January, and we sent it to them.
Yes.
I have to do a new template, because they didn't have the right template and things like that. And for advice, by the way, was to send them the new one, and the information filled in the best I could. And then the thing about the pole distances and things.
Yes.
They could fill in, well, she ended up retyped the whole thing. She asked me for our template, and we typed the whole thing, I checked it. No, it's just kind of a.
So is this different than what we did? Yes, it must be.
No, it's not, she just reused our template and added in the, the part about distances, which is what we asked them to do.
She filled in the blanks?
Yes.
But I still see some blanks.
And perhaps an unobtained call is my, is my understanding, I have an understanding.
All right, so, we, yeah, so we need to.
You have all the ones behind, if you want to see them.
Oh, I see, all right. So this is a redo?
Yeah. And I was gonna make notes that it replaces the other one.
Okay, all right. So.
See, I want a motion that we sign when we do.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we sign when we do.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Okay. And these are, three copies of the same thing?
Yes, one for us and one for the, I have a source of one for whatever the other ones appear to be, I think.
They've changed.
Yeah, consolidated. Excuse me.
All right. I think that's all the signature stuff.
Yeah.
So I think that's, do we have anything else of the non-public, right?
Yeah.
Are you going to do election of offices today, or you gonna save that for Monday?
I think we'll do that at a regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no meeting Monday, it'll be like April 1st.
April 1st.
Yeah.
April Fool's.
April Fool's Day.
Yeah, so, that way we will have full coverage of the newspaper. Melissa can get her picture. I'll try and wear my, my dress t-shirt. All right. So, let's see, we need to, do you have any questions, even though this is not a regular meeting?
No, I'm just, thank you for allowing me to make a comment, that's all I got.
All right, well, you're, you're welcome. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public for review of legal correspondence, that is 91A 3 Roman 2, Perrin L.
Make that motion.
I'll second, would you, yes?
Marcus, a yes?
I'll be a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.